It's 4:02 and I'm going to call to order the work session for budget discussion. As we start, it's obvious online who's on the call. I'm wondering for the record, Tina, I am going to ask the board members to say present on this one. So I'm just going to go down the list and say I with your name so we know you're available. Alejandra, your first. Mr. Hendrix.
Present.
Ms. McGrath.
Present.
Dr. Norey.
Present.
Sar.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Nguyen.
Present.
Thank you. And Dr. Gonzalez, I know you're present. I want to comment that as I'm going through now a few of these meetings, I've discovered the mute button, which is can be a good thing. I do know sometimes when we're in the process of wanting to speak or moving into a discussion, it takes a moment to unmute. And so there's often a lag, so I'll do my best to keep up with you. And want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to say what they need to at any given time. If you are on mute, we'll recognize that you do have an interest to unmute and speak. I think that may help. This should be a good discussion today. We are scheduled until 5:30. And there's a lot of ground to cover. So if perhaps you're not part of the conversation and you want to be on mute, that could be a good thing, too. So with that, I'm glad to know so many of you are present and I look forward to today's discussion. So Dr. Gonzalez, I'd like to turn this over to you right now to move us forward into the meeting.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to provide this work session on our budget. As you all know, the presentation had been provided before. And of course, much has changed since then. So I suspect what you will see today will be an update to what you've previously seen in response to Maricopa being faced with the pandemic. I want to take this moment, if you don't mind, before we get started, to once again thank the employees of Maricopa, particularly our faculty and staff and administration, and our students for really stepping up to the plate during this time and continuing to lead, continuing to work hard, and continuing to provide the best quality instruction and services that we can continue to provide. So I remain very proud of the overall team's effort. I also would like to let you know that we plan to end the remote work environment on May 8th, and that's being reconsidered. I would expect that by the end of this week, you may see some communication that goes out district-wide regarding the possibility of continued remote work environment as we continue to monitor federal, state, and local government recommendations. There's been much interest in the CARES Act. In the roughly $42 million that the Maricopa Community College District is set to receive, where 50%, at least 50% of that needs to go into the hands of students. Guidelines, additional guidelines were provided today. To be quite honest with you, there were several guidelines for both 50% to the students and 50% for the institution and how those could be implemented, mostly by way of a frequently asked questions document. I'm not so sure that we're going to be able to answer questions that you may have because I just simply haven't had time to digest that today. But we're working on that. Of course, the big topic for many of us and a big concern and then the thing that we continue to monitor is enrollment across the district. We are down summer and fall when we compared it this time last year. So clearly, there are many things that we are beginning to do, have been doing, and will continue to do to improve enrollment and also to address short-term workforce development opportunities, given the drastic number of people that have found themselves jobless during or some very quick retraining, retooling to jump back into the workforce as soon as possible. Overall, this remains a very fluid situation. There are many unknowns and variables, and that's perhaps the most frustrating and difficult aspect of what we're currently doing. It makes it difficult for long-term decision-making. And we find ourselves in many instances really going day by day, depending on what we learn from the federal government and how we see this, how this pandemic seems to continue to affect us all. So we appreciate your leadership as a governing board and your support during this time. And that concludes my very brief update. And with that said, I would like to now turn it over to Dr. Jim Moore and Gary Yacinto to provide a budget update to you.
Thank you.
This is Jim Moore. And by way of sort of framing today's discussion, today's budget is really a pared-down version of what you saw in February in a work session there. It became evident to us that we needed to pull back from what we were proposing because the assumptions had changed. We had new assumptions about future, but even those are clouded in unknowns as to exactly how the environment's going to unfold in summer and fall. But having said that, it's our intent through this presentation, and hopefully it's brief enough to where we can answer all the board's questions. We're really trying to get to a point where the board is as comfortable as we are. We're comfortable with what we're proposing at this point. We're also building in some flexibility as things unfold. And if they're going one way or another, you know, we understand that an approved budget does not necessarily require us to spend the entire budget. And so as it becomes evident to us that some revenue streams may not materialize, then we're already working on a number of things that we can share with you. They're not in finished form, that we can start to implement throughout the year to pare down the expenses, the potential savings and expenses with the revenue that's coming in. So we're pretty comfortable that if we have the flexibility that we need, that we can monitor this throughout the year. We're even talking about specific trigger points where certain programmatic things would be looked at based upon the current revenue situations that we see. With that, I will let Gary carry us through the actual presentation that was sent out to the board, and then we can follow up with discussion and questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good afternoon, President Sullivan and governing board members and everyone else out there in virtual meeting land. I'm Gary Yacinto. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the district. Tina, I don't know if you can put the presentation up on the screen or not? If not, I can work my way through it. There we go. Slide one.
Yes, I apologize. I was testing it earlier and forgot to reset.
Not a problem.
Is that clear?
Yes, I think it's up there.
Looks good to me, so thank you.
So please just give me a verbal indication when you want me to proceed.
Absolutely. And I think the chancellor and Dr. Moore gave a great opening, setting the stage. So I think, Tina, we can move on to slide number two, the agenda. We have a rather compact agenda today. Two items, budget strategy, the uncertain economic environment. Hopefully, I can move through quickly. And then we can do a deep dive into the general fund, Proposition 301, and ending up with capital fund. Next slide, please. Our budget strategy is quite simple in this changing times. First, we need to budget within our means. We, you know, due to the amount of risk and uncertainty that we face with the economic environment and the potential negative impacts on resources, we're going to be required to do some careful monitoring of resources and expenditures throughout the year and make possible adjustments along the way as we travel through the year. If our resources fall short, we're prepared, as Dr. Moore indicated, to deploy mitigation efforts. And we have a partial list of items to present to you later in this presentation. Next slide, please. The economic environment, and I'm not going to belabor the state of the current economy. I mean, we all know it's not good. It's bad. In fact, it's horrible. But I just want to point out that as an organization, Maricopa is better positioned than other institutions to withstand a recession and the short-term economic fallout. And we are creating plans for the longer term if the downturn persists. There's no doubt that we face risks, and many of those are laid out, principally the uncertainty around enrollment. And then we have other costs and revenue losses that are going to occur that we need to monitor and ensure that revenue coming in is able to meet our expenses. And we believe that these financial risks can be managed with mitigation efforts and expenditure monitoring and mid-course corrections if necessary. Next slide, please. And here's a pocket that in terms of Maricopa's ability for greater fiscal resiliency during this recession. I guess you can see the pie chart there, and the pie chart shows our general fund FY '21 projected revenue sources. And you can see the big slice of that pie is property taxes, which account for 71%, almost three-quarters of our general fund revenue. Tuition and fees, which is the red slice, is the next largest source of revenue and accounts for about 28% of our total general fund revenue sources. Due to the 18-month lag for property valuations to property tax receipts, we know with certainty how much property tax revenue we'll get in FY '21. And fiscal year '22 is not in any jeopardy because of the lag. We'll have pretty good property tax resources this, in '21 and '22. But what we're going to end up with in enrollment and tuition and fees is largely unknown and uncertain. But looking at the slice of the pie again, that represents tuition and fees at 28%, even if tuition falls by 10%, that's going to be a loss in general fund revenue of 2.8%. You know, it's not an insignificant amount of revenue, but it's an amount that, you know, we can manage. And as I said earlier, we've been evaluating contingency plans for that. And we do have a few ideas that we can present today. Next slide, please. Now into the general fund detail. Starting out with our assumptions. I want to go through these quickly so that you've got a foundation to understand and evaluate the numbers as we go through the general fund in greater detail. First of all, new investment in this go-around, this presentation to you, is set at $16 million, which is a significant decrease from what we started out with and what you saw back in February. Of that $16 million, $13.4 million is ongoing, largely from property tax revenue, and $2.6 million is one-time. Tax levy for new construction of $13.4 million will not change, as I had mentioned. Enrollment changes are uncertain. They could be plus, they could be minus. It depends on a number of factors, how well we're able to keep our current students enrolled as they move through their education regime, and what other ideas that we can put forward to help control other costs. And we do know, as the chancellor mentioned earlier, that there's some $41, $42 million in CARES assistance that will be available for financial aid to our students, which could improve enrollment in dealing with some of our operational costs that the virus crisis has caused. We will experience a significant reduction in investment income due to two reasons. First is interest rates are lower. And secondly, our balances, particularly in the Proposition 301 account, are considerably lower. And we're looking at the potential loss into FY '21 from this current fiscal year of about $3 million. We can expect a partial offset through savings from the shutdown. But having said that, we also have some additional costs that are currently being evaluated. I mentioned the CARES assistance of $41, $42 million. And as the chancellor indicated, we need to know more about the regulations surrounding how this additional assistance money can be spent. I will mention that there have been several meetings of the college presidents that have begun setting guidelines for the distribution and distribution mechanics for distributing that money to students. And then finally, consideration of areas for cost containment and savings. Next slide, please. All right, going back to January of this year and what was presented to you in the February 25th workshop, we had a total of $44 million of budget requests, largely for transformation-related investments, technology investments, investments in our employees through a cost of living adjustment, and some workforce investments. Next slide, please. This shows how we've gone from that 44, I'm sorry, we need to back up one slide, Tina. There we go. This is a side-by-side comparison. At the February 25th workshop, when I presented the $44 million requests, I also indicated to the board that we believe that that was an initial start, and we were beginning to haul that list down into a much more manageable area that we thought was about $28 to $29 million, based on the robust economy at that time. We've now gone through our third lick, a third look, I should say, today, where we now have a total budget, new spending of $16 million. We have reduced the cost of living adjustment from 3% to 2%. And there is $5.3 million that is reserved for college initiatives that the presidents are now working on specific investments that will fall within these categories and/or new categories, given the change in our instruction environment. Next slide, please. And if I'm going too fast, please let me know, and I'd be happy to slow down. This slide shows the summary, the categorization of the $16 million in new investments. We have $1.1 million in required commitments. The cost of living adjustment at 2% is $9.3 million. And then a college and district initiatives, $5.6 million, which is comprised of the $5.3 million for colleges initiatives and the $300,000 that we have built in for additional workforce investments at this time.
What does that mean? What does additional workforce investment mean?
It means that there are additional programs, projects, and personnel costs related to the new workforce development division in the district office. And that's what's been set aside at this time.
Thank you.
All right, next slide. This breaks down the required expenses, and you can see they're broken out into one-time and ongoing. The one-time expenditures we plan to spend out of the FY '20 balance. Oops, we need to go back.
Apologize.
And there are two items there, $500,000 investment, again, in '21 for Rio National that the governing board had previously committed to. And then, board members, if you recall, earlier this year, you authorized a $1 million spend for a development of a facilities master plan. And this is the second half of that. On the ongoing column, you can see that we're expecting another ASRS rate increase from 12.11% to 12.22%, which is slightly less than a 1% increase, but nevertheless will be felt in our employees' take-home pay as a reduction. Employee education adjustment, this is when faculty members move on with professional development, perhaps get an additional degree, and they get a reward in their salary. And that is set aside at $350,000, which is an ongoing expense. And then institutional scholarships set aside of ongoing money of $300,000. A total of $1.1 million in ongoing expenditures. Slide, please. Again, the cost of living adjustments, 2% for all faculty, all classified staff, all employees will get this cost of living adjustment. And you can see how it's going to go for the adjunct faculty, an increase of $10 per load hour, and then part-time hourly of $0.25 increase per hour. Excellent. And by the way, let me also mention that the 2% cost of living adjustment will be applied to all pay grades so that we can heat pace in hiring, hire the best people, and remain competitive. It's also across all pay grades so that we can avoid compression. Every grade, every pay grade will shift by 2%. And again, it'll be applied to all employees. The slide that's up now is just simply to show you what's been happening with real wages for Maricopa employees. And what it shows is that for a typical hypothetical employee that earns $50,000 in salary in 2015, what has happened to the salary over the next five years with respect to the pay increases that the district has awarded, that the governing board has awarded? And it's compared against two inflation indices. The first is the Phoenix CPI for urban areas, and the second is Arizona GDP implicit price deflator. And if you look at the column labeled 2020, you can see that in comparison with the Phoenix CPI, Maricopa employees, this hypothetical employee, but it's the same for all employees across the board, is behind inflation by 6.62%. And looking at the Arizona GDP implicit price deflator, that's an even greater gap of 10.8%. And I'd just point out one other thing, and that is that if you look at the 2019 column and you look at the wage increase, that $750 was a stipend, and it was removed in 2020. So this graph did not, this chart did not make that adjustment. So if that adjustment was made, the disparity would be even greater. It would be 8.2% when you look at the Phoenix CPU, and it would be 12.4% gap compared with the Arizona GDP price deflator. Next slide, please. All right, so this is an abbreviated sources and uses chart that compares FY '20 and FY '21 general fund resources and investments. You can see the total resources have declined between the years since in this year's budget, the FY '20 budget, we transferred some $20 million from the district auxiliary fund to the general fund for additional investments in transformation and technology. The chart also shows the $3 million drop in investment income that I mentioned earlier. You'll also see in FY '21 proposed column, the additional $16 million of new investments that we're proposing for this round of budget discussions. So we also have a slight increase in commitments and reserves to arrive at a projected fiscal year '21 ending balance of $70.5 million. Next slide. And this is another way to look at that imbalance of the general fund by looking at all balances in all of our funds. And you can see right at the top, our all-fund balances are projected to be $448 million this year. And we remove the restricted funds of 75.5, which gets us a net unrestricted fund of $372.6 million. We then take out our commitments and reserves, the Fund II auxiliary fund for colleges and the district office of $88.8 million. Most of that rests with the colleges, not much with the district. The capital fund, we take that out of $105.4 million. Our total reserves and designations there are $302.1 million. And our end balance for the general fund we're projecting for FY '21 is $70.5 million. Next slide, please.
Are we doing any possible reductions for increase in staffing since we're having a huge loss of students? Is there a commensurate reduction in cost with that?
Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath, we are looking at ways to manage and reduce our costs. And we've got several ideas that I'll show you in just a little bit. And then we're looking at more what I think we can call intrusive steps that if necessary, we can move on to, including some of those that you had mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, this graph you've seen in various forums previously. This is the same funds available scenario, only with our new, more restricted budget. And let me just describe it quickly because I know it can be confusing. The dark bars that continue to rise are inbalances without any additional spending other than mandatory spending requirements. The red bar, the tiny red bar across the timeframe, is our additional new spending. You can see the $16 million in FY '21. The assumption moving forward, though, is that new spending, any new spending, would have to be matched by new resources, new ongoing resources, plus any other mandatory expenses that come up. You can see the purple bar is where we end up after the additional spending. That's our balance, and you can see the $70.5 million from the previous charts for FY '20 and '21. We do, based on our conservative assumptions, again, go below the line, beginning in FY, really in FY '26, but in small amounts. And a lot can happen between now and fiscal year '26 in terms of the economic condition. It's likely to get progressively better, and it may get better much quicker than in past recessionary periods. And it gives us time to And it gives us time to better manage enrollment and increase tuition and fees. Assumptions related to the CARES assistance, nor have we built in to what you're seeing in this budget presentation today, any of these additional savings or costs.
Okay, thank you.
But they will likely come out of this year's ending balance.
Also, I'd like to interrupt here and say that, given that some of the facts, information and the other details of this act were just published today in many ways, this will give, the coming week between now and next work session, which would be next Tuesday, will allow them to take a look at some of that detail. And if there's enough information, apply it to those concerns and questions that you have raised and others have raised in different ways.
Thank you.
Mr. Yacinto?
Yes.
Mr. Jean McGrath again. I've been thinking about these people that we have embedded in the high school campuses to encourage them to come and attend our school. And I'm wondering if perhaps those people, are they there every day of the week? Is one of my first question.
I think some are and some are not. They, they
Appreciate if you could figure
Some of the advisors, embedded advisors do not, are not in place every day of the week, but some are. And I don't have that
We, we could cut some of those costs by having those people spend two days per week at each campus. And they're, instead of spending the entire week at one campus. So appreciate if you could figure out any kind of savings in that area. Thank you. Figure out any kind of savings in that area. Thank you.
We'll take a look at that. Thank you. Okay, fiscal flexibility, potential expenditure adjustments. This is just a preliminary list, a first tier, if you will, of those things that we believe that we'd be able to do rather quickly to save on costs. Now, having said that, let me also say, and I know that, take a look at that. Thank you. Okay, fiscal flexibility, potential expenditure adjustments. This is just a preliminary list, a first tier, if you will, of those things that we believe that we'd be able to do rather quickly to save on costs. Now, having said that, let me also say, and I know that many of you have seen the press release, and many of you have seen the press release and the newspaper articles regarding what the University of Arizona is doing. We have sufficient resources to meet the FY twenty-one budget on July first. We do not have a shortfall. Now, it's difficult to predict resources as we move through the year, but I can tell you, we do not have a shortfall today. Now, as things change, the newspaper articles regarding what the University of Arizona is doing, we have sufficient resources to meet the FY twenty-one budget on July first. We do not have a shortfall. Now, it's difficult to predict resources as we move through the year, but I can tell you, we do not have a shortfall today. Now, as things change, we're going to have to look at that and make some decisions. We're going to have to look at that and make some decisions on what we need to do to either cut back expenses or to work harder at getting our enrollment figures back up. But as Dr. Moore laid out right at the beginning of the workshop, in most years, we do not spend up to the budget authorized spending levels. So that is a clear area as we monitor what we need to do to either cut back expenses or to work harder at getting our enrollment figures back up. But as Dr. Moore laid out right at the beginning of the workshop, in most years, we do not spend up to the budget authorized spending levels. So that is a clear area. As we monitor expenditures throughout the year, we can adjust to changes in resources. And this list is just a few ideas that we're exploring. But as, as I said, and others have said, we're exploring other more intrusive ideas that may not need to come into play. Line please.
People mute when they're not talking. There's a lot of background noise.
I'm curious, again, I don't have a whole lot to say about this at this point. Presidents are looking at guiding principles and distribution mechanics for the student assistance. And we're just simply trying to understand the regulations and compliance guidelines on the second half for operations. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring back more to you next week. Next slide, please. Proposition three oh one, really not a whole lot to say here, other than we've had to lower our projections of revenue. Given the fact that, you know, there are sectors of our economy right now that are essentially shut down. So sales tax receipts are going to tank. So what we've done is we've reduced our, our projection of revenue, sales tax revenue into Proposition three oh one account by one million dollars for this fiscal year. And then an additional two million dollars next fiscal year for a total loss of about three million dollars. And again, this is, we receive these monies every month from the state. So we'll be watching very closely to see how those revenues come in for Proposition three oh one projects. Now, the projected expenditures that you see in this chart are really commitments. They haven't, some of these haven't turned into expenditures yet. But they are projects that have been authorized to move forward. And so we are counting those as commitments now, thereby reducing the amount of money in Proposition three oh one that we have to put forward into other projects. And if you look at the fund balance in FY twenty-one, we are projecting that we'll have a fund, ending fund balance of one point, roughly one point eight million dollars. And then, given the commitments that have already been made to projects in FY twenty-one, we are looking at essentially nothing available for new projects. Again, I say this because I say this with all good meaning that these are commitments, they're not expenditures. If necessary, some projects can be paused. And so we'll be looking at that very carefully as well. Next slide, please. All right, capital fund. Capital fund, a couple of things to point out here. We're once again proposing shifting a portion of the secondary property tax rate, the primary tax rate, and dedicate that difference for capital investments. And right there at the top line, we see tax levy. We anticipate it will produce this year an additional six point seven million dollars. And it will all go toward the capital. It's our only source of ongoing capital resources to meet our rather significant large capital needs. The other significant items that I pointed out in this chart include the fact that we're looking to increase our spend on deferred maintenance projects rather significantly this year. FY twenty-one, I should say, this year, we're, we've spent, planning to spend twelve point seven five million dollars. And we're going to increase that in FY twenty-one to twenty-one million dollars. We have three hundred and eighty million dollars of deferred maintenance projects that we need to take care of. So we're trying to catch up as quickly as we can and get that worked out. Next slide, please. Not much here. It's just a breakdown of the district portion of that previous chart. And again, you can see a deferred maintenance moving from twelve point eight million to twenty-one million. Next slide. Mrs. Sullivan, you had asked previously to have some breakdown of deferred maintenance system projects. And this chart shows that. You can see the different systems, mechanical controls, electricals, so forth, structural, that add up to twenty-one million dollars. And there are two hundred and thirty projects that we intend to take on in fiscal year twenty-one. Next slide, please.
Thank you.
This shows the same breakdown. I don't spend much time on this, in slightly different categories of investment categories. And you can see the twenty-one million dollars, you know, goes to reliability, asset protection, safety and code compliance and economic opportunities.
What does economic opportunity mean?
Economic opportunities mean, for example, if a project results in lower electricity costs, that lower, you know, the need to spend capital dollars, things like that. And you can see there are nine of those that we have planned for fiscal year twenty-one. Next slide. Tax rate scenarios. This is the tax shift. And very quickly, what I'd like to point out is that if you count across the columns and you go to the eighth column, which is titled adjusted tax rate. And if you look at the pink area, that is what the proposed rate would be with the shift. And if you just go up one line right above that, that is the tax rate that is in place for this year. So again, we're able to make this shift and collect that additional six point seven million dollars all while being able to lower the overall, the, the total tax rate. And that's the beauty of doing this. And it arises because valuations have increased. Now, there is a slight increase that property owners, property owners will experience. And that's shown in the next slide. And I'll go down to this, to the second segment of this slide. And the bottom line here is that you see that dollar fifty-five total tax increase amount. That is what a homeowner with the property assessed at a hundred and three thousand dollars, that is the annual increase in that property owner's tax bill, dollar fifty-five. So with a small increase
Dollar fifty-five per hundred thousand or what?
No, that's the total bill for the year. So it's a dollar fifty-five. You can see up above that, that's the total tax paid for the district, for the primary, secondary and total. So the homeowner would pay a hundred and thirty-four dollars or cents. And that will be an increase of a dollar fifty-five over the entire year.
Thank you.
And the next slide.
Okay.
Do that quickly, but I'm happy, and I think others may be prepared to speak about specific questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Yacinto. I appreciate you moving through this. There may be some areas of key questions. So board members, I can go in order, I'm not in order, but through each of you and see if you have questions. And that may be the more efficient way. And then we can jump in for discussion together. So right now, let's see, if I'm looking at the list, Alejandra, I know, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. I'm moving again down the attendance list that's listed on the side of my computer here. Mr. Sarr.
Yeah, my questions are more involved in how classes are filling. And in past years, last semester, for example, there were a couple hundred that didn't make it. And we were able to move several of those students in those classes that didn't make it into those that did make it. Although the numbers are lower than what we typically want to see as a full class of twenty to thirty students. So my question is, knowing that we've got this reduction and that a lot more of our classes are going to go online from what we hear, does it really make any difference in an online class, what, which college they're enrolled in? I'm thinking we have a method of making sure that the student can, can be in an online class, but not maybe with the college that they started with. They may have to move over to another college where they can put a full class together. So those are the kind of questions I'm looking at in terms of how we might adjust our budget based on enrollment.
Good points. Does anyone have a summary statement or a question around that? Dr. Gonzalez, Dr. Moore, Gary, Yacinto? No input onto that one, or are you just unmuted?
I just, I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan, I just unmuted and and thank you, thank you, Mr. Sarr. In, in hearing what Mr. Sarr just said, I'm still trying to understand the question. So if perhaps you could reframe or summarize, Mr. Sarr, I'm trying to figure out what the question was in that. Thank you. I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's my fault. It really is, we, we have the same classes. Let's just take English one oh one. And there's usually a couple online class, classes on each college. And sometimes only three or four sign up for any one college's one oh one class. So does it really make any difference if those three students are in one particular college or any other when it comes to online? So I'm wondering if we're thinking about those kinds of consolidations of classes and programs, courses, to kind of help us make better use of the faculty and the other resources that go into a class.
So, Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, my answer to your question would be that, that I can't say that that's something that we're doing across the system now. I know, I'm speaking from my experience at Gateway, for example, that we would have, you know, many types of conversations that you just described when it came to scheduling and improving the efficiency of a schedule. And, you know, not only with online, but ensuring practices took place, for example, that we didn't schedule courses that were prerequisites of one another to prevent a student from being able to sign up for more classes than they wanted. So I appreciate your question and we will just ensure that this is more of a systems level conversation of what type of package is available to students in terms of registering for classes. Thank you.
And then how that would play into any budget considerations, I, I think is, is really a focus of Mr. Sarr's question. Dana, do you have any other questions around that or any other questions? I know you had a lot of interest in the CARES Act. You've been doing some of your own study. Will an update next week be sufficient for you on that?
Yeah, I've been in communication with ACCT and indirectly with AACC today and talked to some of their people and officers to see what they interpret what came out today to be. And one thing that bothers me, and we'll wait till next week when we have more information, is that it appears that you can't spend the, the, the money, the last fifty percent unless you spent appropriately the first fifty percent. So I'm, I'm just going to have to wait like everybody else to see what we come up with over the next week.
Thank you. Thank you. And I know there are some issues that really belong in the operations, but it's worthwhile for us to have the opportunity to ask those so we understand some of the framework for your positions. All right, so I'm moving down the list here and Mrs. McGrath, you're next on my list of board members.
Thank you. I'm very concerned about what it's going to look like if we do a tax increase. People are suffering economically and they're going to be for quite a while because they're going to be playing catch up. So I'm wondering, I don't know what kind of, on this $1.55 tax increase, is that for 100,000 evaluation or what?
No, Ms. Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath, no, that, that $1.55 is not a rate. It is the levy amount. It's the change. So again, it is an increase of something like 1% over the total tax bill that that particular homeowner would pay.
So no matter what the property is valued at, they only pay $1.55?
No, no. Let's say, let's say the property is valued at 300,000. Well, then the increase would be $4.65.
Is there any way that we could not do that because it's, it doesn't pass my FAR test, the front page of the Arizona Republic. Community college is losing students. Community college got $41 million from the feds and they are still increasing taxes. I just, you know, I shudder at the, at the, what it's going to look like. I'm hoping, is there any possible way we could drop this?
And Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath, the difficulty is, is that, and this would be the third year that we have done this tax shift, if you will. And the difficult, the difficult part is that our demands, our capital demands to fix leaky roofs and to pave parking lots and to do all this deferred maintenance, the only source of revenue that we have on a continuing basis comes from this, this additional tax. And while this increase, again, the total tax rate itself will, will decrease.
Okay. Well, I would hope that Mr. Hassan will be able to put together a very sellable reason for doing this and because I think we're going to have to defend it fiercely and I think the taxpayers, some of them at least will be up in arms over, because, over this, because it is an increase. So I'm hoping Mr. Hassan can work magic with this. Thank you.
All right, Jean, excuse me, Mrs. McGrath, do you have any other questions or areas of concern for you or inquiry? I know you've been working quite diligently to discern areas of expense savings and have made, I'm sure, good contributions to Mr. Yekinto's consideration. Are there other items for today's discussion that you would like to bring forward for us to have addressed now or next week?
Well, what I mentioned before, the people that we have embedded in the campuses, spread them a little, around a little bit more so they're not spending so much time at any one campus. Because I think you could put up the schedule, the person will be here all day Monday and Thursday afternoon. So, you know, that way we have fewer hires and also I'm expecting a reduction in the new hires. I don't think we'll need any new hires. I'm looking forward to that reduction in workforce. So thank you. Been a good presentation.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Nguyen, you're next.
Thank you. Mr. Yekinto, thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple observations and I like the fiscal flexibility where you guys have looked at where there's potential adjustments made to expenditures, where you're saying these are things that you guys are looking to get benefit from combining purchasing with using 10 campuses, it looks like. So using system-wide savings. So I don't know how much that'll offset adjustments right now, but I liked the list of the fiscal flexibility of where you were looking. So I just wanted to encourage that and to do some more of that. My question comes from that everything was based on if we were closed till the end of June. How, some of the classes couldn't go online. Has there been any discussion given to classes that needed to be in person if, if we get the go-ahead to open back up and, and conducting summer classes that we don't normally conduct so that we can adjust, adjust the loss that we've had? I don't know of that question. Does that make sense?
It does make sense and I don't know whether Chancellor, that, that falls to you or Jim.
I can, I can answer that, Jim. Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Nguyen, to answer your question, yes. So as I had previously communicated in one of my weekly snapshots to the board, we had approximately 3% of our classes that weren't able to move entirely to an alternative learning environment and perhaps the campus that, the college that was most impacted by that was Gateway, where nearly half, if not more, of its classes were impacted by this. So that's the one college that I'm really looking to right now to develop a plan. And in fact, one has, has already been developed and how we may be able to migrate back in if we're afforded an opportunity to return face-to-face to make up for that lost time during the spring semester. That time could begin as early as the, the last couple of weeks of the, of May, but certainly extend into what would normally be a summer session. And if, 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 if we must continue in, you know, social distancing, if we must continue in a remote work environment, we are going to work diligently to see how we can make this happen. It might be, you know, a situation or scenario where maybe just a couple of students are allowed in at a, at a time. I mean, it's, it's going to be challenging, but we're working on this. I was in a phone call yesterday with 17 college presidents across the country and this is their number one problem that we are all facing and no one has, has got a silver bullet to it yet. It's happening in our CTE programs and it's happening in our fine arts program. So I know I have Dr. Wise online. If there's anything that she would like to add to what I've said, I would invite her to do that to maybe provide a little more substance to my general comment there.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan, I don't know, is Mrs. Wise online?
Yes, she is.
May I recognize her?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this. Yes, Gateway has been impacted significantly. We have developed a plan for our courses that were impacted significantly by not being able to come back. It is primarily in the allied health realm, both clock and credit. Our plan is, at least a draft plan is complete. We plan on presenting it to the Chancellor this evening, sending it to him and discussing the opportunity for us to come back in small groups specifically for the spring semester courses. Likely, we will not return to any of those courses in the summer, but the plan will pick up with those programs starting in the fall.
That's great. I just, I just have one more follow-up question, then I'll, I'll stop and I, and I appreciate-
Fun.
When is, when is, when is the budget due? Like, when do we have to finalize or agree to this? Is this our first, what is our timeline on this? Because our calendar is such a mess right now.
Okay, Ms. Nguyen, I did send the email. The deadline for absolute final budget submission by law is June 5. So what we are scheduled is we will have a second work session based on any other questions and items that you raised between today and then there'll be some tweaking or other considerations. Again, that's when we would have more information about the application of the CARES Act issues. Then we will reconvene next Tuesday, same time, same place, 4:00 to 5:30 for our second work session. Normally, that is a board meeting day, but because we may want to have another robust discussion on the budget that day, we then will have a special board meeting or our regular scheduled board meeting has shifted to May 5. And at that, we will have a first read of the formal budget. And that's why it's so important that between now and next week and then before we see the final budget on May 5, that we have as much opportunity and inquiry as possible so that we can become aligned with what is presented on May 5 during a first read of the budget. That then would take us to the second read of the budget at the regularly scheduled board meeting. I believe the date is May 26 or is it May 27, whatever that Tuesday is. And that is our opportunity to do a second read and take action on the board budget that day and then-
We'll have to vote that day though, because it's due, that'll be our final-
That's why the schedule has been established as it is. So the second read and the vote will be that last date in May, as the usual protocol occurs.
Okay. Just final thoughts. I think obviously what we're going through is unprecedented and so there's a lot of extrapolation and there's a lot of unknowns. So I, I think it'd be nice, we're going to have to set a budget, but it would be nice to know that there's contingency plans if we get to power back up. How quickly can we do that? Just some information about how long it's going to take to become fully operational again, with what restrictions, how is that going to impact our bottom line? There's things we don't know that I think would be important for us to know and I'm happy to send an email to Mr. Yekinto and copy you and other board members. But I think there's things that we need to know as we're going through this consideration because not knowing could be, you know, succeeding or us failing. They're that dramatic of changes. You're looking at net savings of being shut down of 1.6 million. The net cost is, it looks like half, half a million approximately. So we're ahead by being shut down, which isn't a good thing. But we want it, but, but we're going to have to power back up and, and how long does that transition take and what is the cost of that? And, and so I think there's numbers that no one can give us because we're not there that are, we're going to have to ballpark and we need to know. And I think that's my only concern and I, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I know Dr. Gonzalez probably has the more detailed answer. What I can say is I know that that is certainly being addressed at the CEC and other executive level with the, in conjunction with staff and faculty and others. And that those issues are being looked at, both in terms of timeframe issues such as if you're social distancing, must you, can you only have a class size of 15? Can you no longer have a class size of 30 because of this distance people have to have? I mean, there are all sorts of things and I know Dr. Thor may want to offer a comment here. So they're, they are looking at, we will have as much information as possible as a result of that in, from Dr. Gonzalez as things move on. So your points are well taken. I believe that's also why they indicated the, I can't find the exact page number, but in the presentation, the issues on contingency, not contingency planning, but flexibility, I think you identified it as fiscal flexibility of what could come in place as more things evolve, either up or down. So, so your points are well taken. I appreciate your input on that. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any other comments there?
Ms. Sullivan, Mrs. Nguyen, certainly appreciate your, your, your thoughts on that and thinking ahead and we certainly are doing that. Just for example, the mere return to work cannot be a decision that would be made this Friday, for example, and we're all able to come back and everything's just fine on Monday. So there, there needs to be a runway to that experience alone. And I'm, I've currently have asked the, the college presidents to identify how much lead time is truly needed to ensure that, you know, places are clean, disinfected, IT has an opportunity to turn systems back on and ensure that things are running and that there's a migration of equipment back to our campuses. So there's the physical part and then there's the, the fiscal part. And I, and I think that, you know, when I shared in my opening comments, that perhaps the single biggest frustrating aspect of this is the unknown variables that you just mentioned. I wish we, if I could have a crystal ball right now, that would-
Exactly. My crystal ball's not working either, so I get it.
It's cloudy. So thank you though.
Mr. Yekinto, do you have any other comment on that?
No, I think the Chancellor laid it out pretty well.
Thank you. Any other comment before I move on to Mr. Hendrix?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Hendrix, it's your turn. I see you're unmuted, but I can't hear you. Am I the only one who can't hear you?
I can't hear him either.
How about now?
Amen.
Yay, the Verizon connection.
In the, early in the discussion, we talked about fund balances from a higher level and we showed available for allocation roughly 70 million. If I interpret that as a surplus, am I interpreting that correctly?
After, after, after the revenues and resources and expenditures, we're left with 70.5 million that can be allocated. Now, that is a projection based on what we know now and where we're going to end up. And it could change either up or down by the time we're finished with this fiscal year.
Right, but, but for now, with our current projections, because obviously we got to go with the projections you're making, that's the whole point of this discussion. So we're going to assume right now, we're looking at 70.5 million as a surplus.
Yes, for potential allocation, yes.
And in addition to that, we would have 50% of the CARES money. So another 20 million that is going to go somewhere in addition to that. So we're talking 90 million. Am I, am I on the right track with thinking that?
Depending on when that, when that money is received, it, it could be that, yeah.
I mean, it's reasonable to assume we're going to receive it in the reasonably near future. So I guess I'm looking at it in high-level numbers and we got a $90 million surplus and we'll look for a way to spend it. I understand that. But how do I tell constituents, we've got a $90 million surplus, which is roughly 10% of our budget, but I need to raise your taxes?
And-
And our enrollment's going down and we're getting tremendous money from the federal government. How do I explain that?
Well, I think in part, you know, the explanation comes from having so many uncertain and unknown variables in the mix. Now, you know, we've made our projections the way that we have. I mean, you're right. I mean, that's what we go with. Whether or not that additional money, 70, that, that additional balance would be necessary moving forward in FY '21 to fill some of those gaps. I think it's a, I think it's a good place for us to be right now, to basically have some flexibility so that as we look at other contingency actions that we may have to take, if enrollment doesn't come in the way that we think, right now, we're, we're saying, we don't know what it's going to look like. Could be more, could be less. So we're saying, let's, let's go in with it being flat. But for every, for every 1% decline in enrollment, we're going to lose $2 million in tuition and fees. So if, if, if enrollment is declined by 10%, that's 20, that's $20 million right there. So it's, I, I think it's good to have this as a cushion simply because we don't know what's going to happen into FY '21.
No, I, I understand, but as you said in the beginning, the amount of revenue we get from tuition is relatively small. It's 28%. get from tuition is relatively small, it's 28%. So if our tuition went down by 10%, or our enrollment went down by 10%, as you said at the beginning, that's a very small amount of our budget. If we factor in, we're getting 40 million now from CARES, 20 of which we're just gonna absorb, and in all likelihood, we'll get more as they continue to offer additional CARES bills. I guess I'm concerned when all of our assumptions are, we say, we have these numbers, we have these estimates, we have these projections, but our best answer is, what if we made a mistake? In case we made a mistake, we'd like to tax you now, just in case we made a mistake. And if we do tax you, don't worry, we'll find a way to spend it. I guess I'm not comfortable with it. I'd rather make the assumption that we made good estimates, and we've done good research, and, and we have good estimates, and we don't need to say, hey, we already have an extra 70 million, but we'd like another 10. In addition to the 20 we're getting from CARES, I guess as a taxpayer, I'd rather keep my money in my pocket, and when the government needs it, they can come back and ask for it. But I'm, a- all of the assumptions you're describing, or we're assuming that all of your assumptions are wrong on the low side. I guess I'd like to think your assumptions are reasonably accurate.
Well-
And I, I guess in short, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the tax increase based on the rest of this presentation. I don't see anything here that justifies the increase in taxes of any amount. If anything, we had to lower the, lower the taxes and give back part of the 90 million we've already got that we shouldn't even have.
Well, Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Hendricks, again, I, I think that we are in a good place. We, and when you look around at the other higher education institutions, the universities in particular, they are not positioned the way that we are. And I go back to that tax increase, and again, we've, we've done this, this tax shift, this would be the third year, and because we don't have any source of capital money, it's entirely dedicated to capital, and the amount that will be, the initial amount that'll be raised this year would be 6.7 million dollars to go against a deferred maintenance bill of $380 million. And, you know, that's, that's basically where we're at. And the $70 million projected general fund budget, again, if things get very ugly for us and we can't turn the ship around, or the economy doesn't help do it for us, then we have that amount of contingency money that can be used together with the other actions that we've outlined to, to meet our obligations. And that's, that's kinda why we put it together the way that we have.
And I, and I agree with everything you've said. I, I think we are in much better position than many others in higher education, and we're in a much better position because we've been fiscally responsible in the past, and we've done a good job with our production, projections, and a good job with how we've managed our, our district. At the same time, it, it doesn't justify raising taxes just to be on the side of caution when we already have 10% of our budget and the surplus in addition to contingencies we already have. I, I just, I can't support the tax increase, there's just nothing in this presentation that tells me we've done a great job in the past, so we're in better shape than anybody else around. And so therefore, we need to big, build a bigger surplus because we think we're not competent at making good projections now. We obviously made good projections in the past. We wouldn't be in such a good spot now if there's, if there's some reason we think we're not capable of making good projections now, we need to look at that problem and fix what the cause of that is. I'm, I'm not concerned about that. I'm confident that we, that we will withstand the challenges coming forward, just like we have in the past. We went through the recession, we did just fine. I'm confident that we have the staff and the talent and the people that will get us through going forward. I'm not so excited about fleecing the taxpayers for some slush fund because we're not confident in our people. I am confident in our people, and I'm not interested in a tax increase at this time.
I don't know where the background noise is coming from, but it's pretty dramatic, and maybe folks can reconsider their mute button. Okay, wow, thank you. So certainly that's something for you to consider, Mr. Yacinto, as we look at next week's conversation. You know, I mean, it, it, it would go forward, not take another look at that, and we'll see where we are next week on that issue. Mr. Hendricks, do you have other comments, or is anything else standing out for you?
I'm good. My biggest thing is the tax increase. I just don't see any justification for, from what I've heard so far.
Thank you. Is there anything else lingering? You said this is your main. Is there anything else out there? This is our opportunity, folks, to, to find out before we see our second go-around next week.
I'm good for now.
Has everybody, has everybody put their two cents worth in? No?
Nope, we have a couple more to go, Mrs. McGrath, so hold on. We have 10 more minutes in the call, but if we need to, I'm hoping maybe we could extend it by another 10 minutes. So with that, Dr. Thor, it's your turn, and then it's Mr. Narini's and mine to close.
Thank you. I have one question and two comments. I have a very basic question about expenditure limitation. So it's my understanding that once we set the budget, which we have for the fiscal year 1920, that we cannot expend above that amount. So do we have enough flexibility that we're able to accept the CARES Act money? What I'm, what am I not understanding about that concept?
And Mrs. Sullivan and Dr. Thor, Dr. Thor, you broke up a little bit, and I didn't catch the full question.
So, so I know that once we set the budget, that that sets the ceiling on our expenditures. So we're now getting assumed, I'm assuming in this fiscal year, $41 million from the Fed. Do we have the capacity to be able to accept that?
And Mrs. Sullivan, Dr. Thor, I believe we do. We have sufficient carryforward ability from within the expenditure limit to be able to do that.
Okay. And so the same would be true for next year if we get additional monies under subsequent minimums to the CARES Act?
If, yes, we, we have several hundred million dollars in expenditure limit carryforward that we can use, but as we use it, we use it and lose it. So there is a limit to what we can do, but we're not gonna reach it this year, and we're likely not gonna reach it next year.
Okay. Then I have a comment about the reduction of the COLA from the proposed 3% to 2%. And I'm certainly, as everybody else is, very clear about the circumstances, but I do want to express my disappointment in seeing that happen, particularly when we look at the Phoenix CPI and the Arizona comparison, that we are losing ground every single year with our employees. And it would only take, what, like $4.6 million to be able to maintain that 3%. So I would ask that we at least look at the option of a mid-year increase should enrollment turn out to be better than anticipated, the economy recovers faster, whatever. I'm very frustrated that the entire time that I have been on the board, that I have been asking for this district to have an understandable and predictable compensation philosophy and strategy, and we still don't have it. And like Dr. Gonzalez, I'm so impressed and so just overwhelmed by what our employees are doing right now, and I'm disappointed that we're not proposing to give them a COLA that at least keeps them current for this year. Then that said, I also wanna comment on the property tax levy and remind everybody the commitment that was made a number of years ago, having to do with the fact that as our secondary tax is decreasing, that we agreed as a board to shift not all of it, but some of it over to the primary tax for the purpose of funding our capital expenditures because we have no money for capital expenditures, including all of the deferred maintenance that need to be done. We also agreed at that time by, by adopting this strategy for the long term that we would not seek a general obligation bond. And I recall very clearly how pleased ATRA was with us taking that approach rather than funding our capital expenditures through a general obligation bond. So if we're going to look at an adjustment to get rid of that $1.55, let's do the absolute minimum and not abandon the whole philosophy that we agreed on for investing in these colleges long-term. And that completes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Mr., any other comments from anyone on that? Being that, I'm going to move to Mr. Narini.
Thank you. And I wanna thank Dr. Gonzalez and Dr. Moore and Mr. Yacinto for the presentation. It's really kind of a big, a big topic to kind of wrap your head around and to, to do it, and whatever that was, 20 slides, it was impressive. I, I agree with Dr. Thor about the COLA and the, the taxes. I think that's, that's so important. I mean, what, I think we also need to keep in mind that even with that, that surplus that's there, we did it with the $13 million cut. You know, we, we were able to go back, or we, the staff was able to go back and identify some areas to, to cut. And I think if, if anything, what this crisis has taught us is the, is the necessity to be prepared and to, to have those kind of funds available to, to make sure that we can weather a crisis like this. And so that to cut ourselves down to the bare minimum while making cuts to, to services, important services and, and staff, I, I think it would be irresponsible on our part. But with that being said, you know, I, I'm looking forward to, to going through and seeing the next go-around and getting the discussions going. Again, I appreciate all the work that was gone into, to drawing this up and presenting it in a way that we can begin to wrap our head around. Thank you.
Thank you. So before I make my comments, are there any other comments, Mrs. McGrath? It looked like you wanted to jump in again at some point for something.
It just makes sense to me that the taxpayers are actually the owners of this school, they pay for it. And I think that with this economic situation we have, we ought to strongly consider not increasing the taxes on them this year. We have the money to cover it, and I think that we would be very prudent to spend it on the capital improvements and not increase the taxes. Thank you.
If I understood, thank, you're welcome. If I understood, weren't the monies through the tax levy going to be applied to capital, or did I miss that somewhere? Mr. Yacinto?
No, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Yes, they, they are to be applied to capital. That, that was the purpose.
Okay. All right, thank you. I know we've reached 5:28, and we were agreed that we would convene it until 5:30. I want to express my appreciation, first of all, to the work that has gone into recalibrating a budget pretty quickly once we, we hit unknown territory about a month ago, month and a half ago. So you've done a lot of tremendous work that has been presented today in a very short period of time, recalibrating and readjusting the budget completely. I know that there are some still lingering components for you to take another look at, Dr. Moore and Mr. Yacinto. And certainly, as we move forward into next week's discussion, there may be some additional points and frameworks on that. Board members, you've, you've made good contributions to the conversation, and it looks like we do have a couple issues that either we need to flesh out more in a discussion with all of us, or we'll just see what's presented and go from there. So I want us to have an opportunity to revisit maybe some hard numbers next week, Mr. Yacinto, so that we have better, you know, bigger, I don't know what the word is, so we can, can see it in, in its application and respond to absolutely how it plays out. I mean, there's a lot at stake here. We are in unknown territory. I feel fortunate, we're in a position due to a well-managed system. We have even a conversation about $70 million versus nothing. And that is a testament, of course, to all the activity that boards previous to this one and, and others have done, as well as the staff's good work. So with that, unless there's any other com- comment or conversation, Mr. Yacinto, do you have any final comments?
No, I just wish to thank the board for letting us move through this and do it quickly. Appreciate all the comments that we've received, and we'll go back and we'll come back next week with some additional revisions for you to consider.
Thank you. And maybe some comparative numbers, just in case. So it's, if you do this, it's this, if you don't do this, it's Y, you know, that sort of thing. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any other comments?
Mrs. Sullivan, member of the board, I would echo Gary and his comments and appreciating the board, and again, thanking the many employees and students of the Maricopa District. This has been very helpful, and we appreciate your, your comments and your questions, and we hope to be able to answer many of those as we continue this budgeting process. So thank you to Jim and Gary for your hard work putting this all together.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And board members, is there anything at next week's meeting that you want or need beyond a budget discussion?
Yes, I would like to know what the actual cost of living is, because apparently Dr. Thor thinks that we are not meeting the actual cost of living with our COLA, so I'd like to know, know exactly what the, what the COLA should be. I think she has a very reasonable point of view there, and I'm, if she says it's worth $4.6 million, that sounds-
It's on one of the slides, it's on one of the slides, Mrs. McGrath, that was presented today.
That the federal government's, or the state government's cost of living is X?
Yes.
Maybe, Mr. Yacinto, you and Mrs. McGrath could go over a couple of those figures again?
Sure, be happy to.
Not right now, but I'm at one-on-one so that she's aware of what that is, and then we can rediscuss this at the next board meeting. Anything else?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes. Yes, hi Dana.
I think as time goes on here, the enrollment becomes a bigger and bigger factor. We're at 23% reduction today over last year at the same time. I think that needs to be part of our discussion. I, I agree that we don't know what the final number's gonna be, but it isn't looking good, not just here, but nationwide. So if we could have a discussion, not only on where we are with enrollment, but what kinds of actions the chancellor and others are taking to make sure that we get as many students into our classrooms as possible.
Okay, great. Okay, we can have that. Anything else? All right. I hear silence. So with that, thank you, everyone, and thank you again, IT, for supporting us through all of this. We did better than our last time, we're, we're all improving, so that's always a plus. I hope everyone has a good evening and a good rest of the week. Thank you. And as things come up, board members, let me know, and we'll make sure those get addressed for next week. Thank you. May you all have a good evening.
Sure. Thank you.